This conference will now be recorded.
I had to get some LMA, liquid mood altering. Thanks for reminding me. Okay, I can only see Greg, Lauren, and Caroline. Caroline?
Tim is here.
And John and I are in my office together.
Okay, and then so I see Tim, is Gary and James here?
No.
Okay.
Oh, there's Greg.
Greg's here.
All of a sudden, my meeting disappeared on me, so I'm back.
Let me text him, because he was well aware of it, but let me text him and see if he's having trouble logging in.
If he's having a hard time, I know a computer guy. Are we just missing Gary, too? Yeah, which is odd.
There's Gary.
There's Gary. Gary just joined in. He's on time, just so everybody knows, it's only 8:59. He has well in before. Yes, he is. The Wiz is here. Morning, Gary.
Howdy.
Morning, Gary.
Morning, Gary. Good morning.
I'll give James two more minutes. You know what, though? We have a quorum, and if he comes in in two minutes, I don't think that this is a super... Well, it's super inflammatory, but I believe we'll probably have a... Be pretty agreed on this, so we'll go ahead and open up this special session of the Common Council of the Port... Port Orford City Council, and this is to talk about water restrictions. Unfortunately, I didn't print out my agenda before I got here, but I'm pretty familiar with it, so... We're here to talk about water restrictions. We... There's a lot more process to do any sort of a moratorium on anything. But we were sent that list yesterday, which we can implement. Is there anything on that list that... That people think is egregious, or overdoing it, or things we need to add? Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead, Tim.
Hey, the only thing I had, Pat, it looked like a pretty good list, but I think, under the circumstances, I know we've talked about it in the past as a council, getting grants for water-saving devices, and there are a lot of those grants out there. We talked about that. It's a double-edged sword, because we save water, but we also lose revenue. But right now, it's time to lose revenue to save water, because water is so important. So if we could grant for aerators, for showerheads, and low-flow toilets, I think that would help greatly, because a low-flow toilet today flushes at 1.28 gallons per minute. I know they're not ideal for every situation, but old toilets flushed at five to seven gallons per flush, and the low-flow aerators can go down to as low as like a... Like we have on our houses, 1.5 gallons per minute on my sink, which most people would just take a sawzall and cut the end off of the sink, because the flow comes out so slow. But honestly, it's what you have to do to save water, and the showerheads now go down to even one... 1.25 gallons per minute, where the federal standard, I think, is still at 2.2 gallons per minute. So, it's the suggestion.
Right. I'm gonna have the hardest time, as anyone, because of the boat wash angle of this, or you know what I mean? Like, people always rinse their motors out when they... When they get off the port, so is that considered a boat wash? Because that's kind of important for their engines to function correctly.
Or they bring it down to Garrison Lake and run them around into Garrison Lake for about 10 minutes.
Right. That's true, too.
I think that's an important aspect of that industry, and we have to continue to support it. The only thing you can ask, I mean, if a guy's flushing a boat, and I've seen it, you've seen it, we've all seen it for 20, 30 minutes, that's excessive, where we can get him down to, you know, probably five minutes, I would think. That's plenty of water through a boat motor, but I'm no expert on it by no means.
You're right. They'll hook up their boat motor, and then they'll clean up, and you know, get all the fish out and do that. So I'll... I will post signs everywhere to limit water and suggest going to the lake if that is adequate where you are.
Maybe limiting the recreational instead of the commercial side of it, you know what I mean? More, you know what I mean? That's what this was sort of going for with watercraft and, you know, more recreational stuff. Not so much the guys that do this for a livelihood that need that water washed out, so.
And as a... Just as a reminder, if you guys are down there, a lot of smaller boats live fish for, you know, for commercial-wise. So not every smaller boat down there you see will be a sporty. But we'll definitely do our best, and we'll definitely say there's water restriction. I just wanted to let everyone know that that is gonna be an issue, and I won't be able to be sitting out there all the time, but we will do our best to concern.
Another thing I wanted to add to this, too, is we received right-of-way permits yesterday that required boring, right, John? That we are... I think that is probably a good choice to not do, because if they hit a water line, that's it.
What are they boring for?
What are they boring for?
Cable.
Cable.
Is that fiber optic?
Yeah, and CVT, but remember 14th and 20th, that cost us almost four feet of water.
Yeah, yeah, because I thought they'd be up a little higher, but obviously, they're right about the same level as our mainline.
Yeah.
Perhaps wintertime would be a better time for them to bore, when we receive more rains to help fill that reservoir back up.
Yes, sir. I agree 100%.
So where are we thinking we are right now? I went down there the other day, and it looked like it was 18 inches lower than it was last year at this time, when I did that video.
I think it's about 10 feet lower than it was, because, I mean, you can see the 18 inches down on the mud, but at the back of the impound there, like, all that in the back corner is well lower than it should be. What do you think, John?
Well, it's our recovery rate, because, one, the thing hasn't been dredging so long, we don't have the capacity we normally have. It's completely full of sediment, and we used just a little over a foot out of it yesterday, and then we only recovered four tenths overnight, and we shut off at eight to see if our recovery rate would go up, because we've been running 24... We've been running 16 hours a day, and firing back up at 6:40 in the morning, which is only six, almost seven hours of recovery time. And last night, we shut off at 8:30, increased the recovery time, we saw four tenths of water coming in. So, we're still not getting back what we're taking up during the daytime.
Jesus.
Yeah, we're sucking 300 gallons a minute, 290, something like that, so about 18,000 gallons an hour. And then times that by 12 or 16 hours, you can see where we're going. So, really, for one, immediate dredging of the whole impound, which will take some state permitting, because sometime in the past, somebody changed the permit to only allow 25 yards a year to be removed. That impound needs a complete dredge. It is shallow. I got quotes on dredge yesterday, and they were like about 150 for something we would need, or 22,000 a month for rental. And I didn't ask to see if they would come down dredging, because that would be... But that thing needs a complete dredging, and then we need to stop our water loss, because we're still losing 40 to 50%, and that's killing us. We just can't. We can't keep going like that. With all the connections that are going in, I wouldn't add any more connections until we figure out how we're gonna... How we're gonna mitigate having enough water to supply everybody.
Hey, Pat, did you meet with... It seems like I remember this several months ago, you and David meeting, or David discussing with whoever provides our dredging permit, that we could get an emergency permit to take out more than 25 cubic yards?
I kinda have an inkling of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can't... I'm not nailed down on it, Tim, but I know there's some truth to that. I wish we could get the ports dredged down there, so we wouldn't have to dig. You know what I mean? We could just suck all that sediment out, because it's so fine that... Then we wouldn't run the risk of hitting that bentonite layer, because they say it's okay, but one nick with that excavator, and we're gonna lose water faster next year, so...
And that's kind of what I'm wondering what happened, too, because we lost a lot of water quickly after... It just started on Wednesday, when we started seeing the decrease and the recovery not coming back, so we started monitoring it on Thursday, and Monday I was pretty concerned, so that's when the flags came out. But who knows if he didn't punch a hole in that night when they did it in November? Because, see, we had heavy rain all through the winter, right? And when the rain quit, it started going away. But we also don't have the recovery coming in from those back two creeks like we normally have from the watershed. So, I don't know. It's kind of twofold.
That's the big deal. I walked up to the top of the upper culvert, and man, there isn't much water coming down in that creek.
The other side's left. My farm.
I wonder, are we losing some through the weir, John? You think we're kind of running out in the bottom corner?
Yeah, and we're losing water. That dam needs to be replaced sooner than later, too, because if it blows out, we're really in trouble, because the rot's at the very bottom. And see, that's the other thing with the sediment buildup, guys, is when the lower drain was broken and they never replaced it, when you're draining from the bottom, you're flushing a lot of that sediment out. When you're plugging it from the top and pulling boards from the top to let water out when you have high water, you're not getting rid of the sediment. So that's one of the reasons the compound is filling up so quickly. So, putting in a bottom drain again in a culvert to be able to control the height of the reservoir would also help and assist with getting rid of all that sediment that's flushing down in there from those two north and south fork arms.
And I've had conversations with multiple people from the state. Kurt Downs, who is our representative for water, and Jason from the RCAC. So I requested Jason to come down here, a free service for him to come down here and do kind of like a consultation and give us a plan of attack. It's free by the state, so he'll be down here sometimes with John. But they've also... The state has also informed me that, obviously, Garrison Lake is a... Is our emergency water source, and that's the one that's listed. So, with that being said, what John and I have kind of... The plan we've kind of come up with is to... If, number one, Garrison Lake Pump House is still hooked up at any chance to the city services. It's been known since the winter of '93, based upon all of our research. And then send out samples to see if the water is even something that we can even run through at that point, then. If it's all hooked up and that pump house will work at a certain point, then we might be able to pull from there. But that's, right now, pretty much a long shot, is kind of what we're figuring.
Yeah, because just as a reminder, on Garrison Lake, somewhere in our literature, there's like the 1960 description of the lake, and it's a lagoon, for one, it's not a lake. And there's only one... The clear water is only about from 15 to 20 feet down, and it hangs there in the middle. And so that will be a huge issue and costly, and then the other thing is the snail problem they had there is part of the reason that things got shut down, because it was just messing with their pump works all the time.
Right.
And wasn't there a study that said that the septic tanks on the north side of the lake were also draining through it as well? So...
Yeah, and also the zoo set broke, so it was heavy in salt water at one point. Now, it's probably set, obviously, at the bottom of the lake, and the fresh water is more than likely on the top, or closer to the top now.
And that overtopping could happen any winter.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we can't ask the fire department to use that water if they need water to practice, or have something set up to where they have their big pump down there, and they can fill up their tenders, you know what I mean? Because it's really hard to say you can't use hydrants, and we know they're gonna use them if they have to, so maybe they'll preemptively set that up a little bit.
I talked to David the other day, and he has agreed to pull from the lake, or pull for anywhere besides our water right now. So he is well aware, agreed to already do those things, so I'm sure that that's what we're working on. The other option that we have, we belong to, what is it, Orion or whatever that is?
Orin.
Orin. We belong to Orin, and so we do have an option as a last resort to be able to put something, a request through there, and have water trucked from Coos Bay, North Bend, Bandon, Gold Beach, somewhere here for us to use. That's an option, but it's obviously then, at some point, we have to be able to help another city that is in need at some point in time. That's kind of part of the agreement, is every city will help each other out, but if you pull one from it, then you have to kind of be the next one in line to pull the minute that you can to help someone else.
We have a few options. That's for sure. But it's alarming.
I think the restrictions will... Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
It's just alarming that we're as low as we are, and I know John and them have been keeping an eye on it, but it's kind of alarming that it went down so fast, and it's, you know, it's not coming back up. That's alarming, because we're eight weeks out from receiving rain, probably, at a bare minimum.
We unfortunately did have a bunch of leaks last week, so that will draw down the offer pretty bad, or, you know, catching up and all that. So, I mean, in a perfect world, we'll put these restrictions on, and that will lessen the usage enough, because it's absolutely mind-blowing how much the usage changes in the summertime. You know, we're talking like at least twice as much, and we all know that's bumped up even more. We got new houses, we got some extra usage houses, and... And a lot of these leaks, just as a reminder, we've been losing 50% because we have an antiquated system that the AC pipe loses like 10% of the water wicking through there. All of these polylaterals probably have eight or 10, you know, patches on them, so... We're just... I think we're losing like three or four gallons a minute in like 200 spots, so it's really hard to find, because they sit there and leak a little bit until they break loose and enough to boil up out of the ground, so... And my one question, Jessica, is can we stop putting in new services? Isn't that kind of a moratorium?
I think we can, based upon what I've read, but Shayla, I don't know if you want to chime in and say if we can or we can't, but I'm pretty sure we can request it, according to everything I've read, but maybe just... Let's just ask Shayla, just to make sure.
You can probably do it for a short time period, just through water restrictions, but if you're gonna do it for, you know, more than two months, you're gonna need to put a moratorium in place and have a workout plan.
Okay. So this might be a...
Sorry, one of the things I noticed when I was looking up and doing a lot of research is we are one of the few cities in Oregon in our municipal code that does not have a section on water restrictions and water conservation.
I noticed that, too. Every other place has authority within their municipal code to go into various degrees of water restrictions.
And some of them are saying, "I need the water restrictions put in place," without having to go through city council till it hits certain levels. So, that's something maybe we need to look at. Obviously, not something right this second, because it's gonna take longer, but maybe that's something we need to do, too.
No, I think it's a requirement from the water guy's side of things. I think you need to have a curtailment plan in place.
We should get that motion.
We don't have anything in our code to even, frankly, put in water restrictions. We have to go to state statute to do that. There's nothing in our code.
That explains why the last time we did it, in 2013, I pulled a matter of declaring state of emergency where the city of Port Orford was declaring water restrictions. It was on resolution 2013-25.
Right. So it's the declaration of emergency that lets you implement things not in your code?
Yeah, so that's probably...
If you already had it in your code, you wouldn't have to declare a state of emergency. You'd just implement the restrictions.
Got it.
Can we go ahead and get that in motion, at least?
The drafting of a new ordinance for water restrictions?
Yeah.
Sure, depends on how much time Jessica has.
So Shayla, what's our best route today to put a 60-day restriction on all these things on the list? Like, how do we make our best effort today to where we can start working on these other things to get them in place? But we... I mean, I think the point of this meeting is to get whatever restrictions we can as soon as we can.
Right.
Do we need to declare emergency?
Today, you should implement the water restriction, so the public knows that this is coming. I think you should then do the paperwork to declare the emergency and put the resolution in place. But if you put out there that there will be water restrictions, maybe that will curtail people right now. Nobody wants to run out of water. I mean... That's a problem.
So, could I suggest... Could I suggest... I just would like to suggest the way we word that... I mean, I would like... I don't want people here to think that this is only a Port Orford problem, so I want to be clear about, you know, whereas the city of Port Orford, like other cities and municipalities in the West, are struggling with a drought situation, I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody understands this isn't just a Port Orford thing, it's a regional thing. The West isn't a drought situation. There are already 19 counties in Oregon that have declared drought situations.
Right. And I think that the state has declared some of those drought situations, so you could probably piggyback on those emergency, you know, declarations as well. You'll probably find those.
I think there is one that just was done by the state within the last 30 to 60 days, so I think you're right.
I don't know that Curry County has declared a state of emergency or a drought, but...
No, Curry County has not. I actually talked to the city administrator from Clamath Falls the other day, and they actually just took advantage of that one thing of having the water trucked in from another county, actually. So Clamath Falls just had a bunch of water trucked in within the last month, because they were not gonna have enough to last till the rain season.
Yeah, it sounds like it's not a common thing now.
Yeah, it's the new normal, it seems like, and it's scary.
And Clamath Falls is way bigger than Port Orford. I don't even know how we could afford that. I mean, even the diesel for the trucking alone is...
Yeah, that's it. Just saying.
Because what is it? I mean, at best, it's probably like 10,000 gallons a pop.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So you're gonna have to run trucks, what, 24/7 for days and days and days, basically?
Yeah. Well, what do we pump a day, John? What'd you say we pump a day, like 150,000?
18,000 gallons an hour.
Okay, so 20 times 16 is...
So we need two trucks an hour.
Like 400,000.
We need two trucks an hour to do what John does, right? Because you're 10,000 gallons per tank, right?
No, that might be low, Greg. That was a ballpark. I think 10,000 gallons might even be a lot.
I think so, too. I think you're talking three to five.
I think five gallons, if I remember correctly from the fire trials I did at the FPA, were five gallons. Some of the tenders might be a little bit bigger, but not much.
So basically, we're pumping around 300,000 a day?
Yeah, depends on whether we're running 12 or 16 hours.
Yeah, that was at 16, and so that's a lot of water trucks. But, you know, if we're losing 50% of our water, that does put it around 140 or 120. So you're still talking 14 or 15 trucks, though.
Right, right.
But it's good to have options, too.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And it was weird, just the way it changed so quickly, because, you know, we were still... We were still getting good recovery last week, and then we had those seven or eight breaks, and when we looked on Thursday, that's when we noticed the significant drop overnight. It was almost six inches, and it didn't come back to that. So, I don't know what changed. I don't know if it's the water uphill that's coming in, or if the source dried up, or Beaver Dam, who knows? But it's definitely significantly dropped within two days.
Do you need to find out what?
I don't know if it helps, but I did look on the website, and it appears that Coos County has declared a state of emergency, and that the governor approved it, whatnot, with large droughts. So, seeing that we're next door, I don't see that it's gonna help.
John, are you watching that on a regular basis now? I mean, you guys are up there every day, every day?
Yeah.
Yeah, nighttime when we shut down, we make a measurement, and then we fire up in the morning. We just all have to look at it and see what our recovery rate is.
Good, good.
And John and I... John lets me know at night and in the morning what it is. So I know, so between the two of us, at least one of us has every... All the information at some point.
When can we put this in place? I mean, we... We need to start doing something yesterday.
So Shayla, if I... If we decide to do the declaration of state emergency, I can type that up and get that ready. How do we make sure that... Do I need to... Does city council just can say, yes, write up a declaration of state emergency, so we can get it done and sent out, and then I can write up the resolution, as long as it includes everything they want? Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, they'll have to come back together and vote on it. I think that today, you make a motion to put some water restrictions in place. The problem with just doing it kind of informally at the onset is that when you see people violating it, you don't have a lot of teeth to enforce anything. But when you put it in an emergency declaration, as well as a resolution, then there's some teeth to enforce it when you see somebody out watering their lawn. But I think that doing something right now, just via an informal motion, so that you can put it out on the website and get the information out there to people, before you are able to put the declaration and resolution together, is the prudent thing to do.
Yeah.
Can we change this water restriction suggestions? Can we remove the word suggestion? I mean, we want to...
You can make it as hard right now as you want to. I'm just saying that for code enforcement purposes, without it being fully in a resolution, it would be hard. Hopefully, people get the picture.
Yeah, I just put those down as suggestions to you guys for things that I saw that other counties or other cities have used. And then, like I said, I want to add the right-of-way permit in there, too, just so everyone is aware that if they supply one, there are reasons that they can be denied for right-of-way, without an option.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we're... We all want restrictions, and it sounds like we can get a letter out saying these restrictions will be implemented, or something along those lines with a little bit of wordplay. You know, like we are... These restrictions are going to be in place, and then we'll pick it up on the other end, but we'll have the letter out. And I think that at least neighbors will say, "Hey, did you know we're on water restrictions?" Or, you know, even though we can't enforce it, doesn't mean we can't have a conversation about it. And so maybe there's gonna be a handful of people that are adamant, or two or three that are just not nice people that are gonna do what they want to do, until we have the teeth.
You can't stop me.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, if this is gonna be an ongoing problem, and you really need to do some dredging and some improvement and whatnot, you might want to consider a formal moratorium on water hookups. I mean, this doesn't sound like a problem that's going to cure itself in two months with some rain. It sounds like a problem that isn't getting cleaned up. It sounds like a problem that if it doesn't get cleaned up, you're going to have the same problem next summer.
Ken, can I ask if perhaps Jessica could get us the information? I'm just curious how many hookups we've had in the last year. And I don't want to call her on it right now, but perhaps she could research it and get back to us so we know what we've had over the last year?
I know it's at least 10.
I've been here since October. I think we've done 10, or 11.
And right now, we have three pending, plus three or four with new construction options that are coming down the pipe.
Yeah, not a lot of water.
So are those six going to be allowed to hook up, I guess, then? Or should we consider cutting it off at the very least after those six, or?
Cut off now. I'm just letting you know what it looks like.
I've got one left to actually hook up because it's already tapped, but I think that's probably where we should stop.
Okay. So a property owner does have the option to get a well, so it's not like we're completely stopping their build. Quite frankly, I'm in contact with a well contractor as we speak, so.
That's going to cause a problem for those people because they've probably guaranteed to their lenders that they have access to water and can finish their build.
I was wondering about that.
Huge problem with their loans.
I was wondering about that.
I don't know that I would cut off something that's applied, we've approved, and it's in progress. I think that-
So I don't know how many people have actually started the construction process, though. So is that something that we want to know, if they started construction, or is it just the loan process?
Well, or can we delay it with a two-month emergency order until we start getting some rain and have the water to provide them?
And it's a-
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Shayla?
I said, I just think that's going to be a case-by-case situation. I have a hard time cutting people off who have gone through the full city process. You know, I don't necessarily see them as different than somebody who's currently on the system, frankly. But new applications, definitely, they're out of luck until there's a workout plan. But you're going to, if you put in a moratorium, you have to have a workout plan.
Yeah, that's the problem. And it has to be a timeline too, doesn't it, Shayla? We have to have a timeline.
You have 60 days to put a plan in place, and then another timeline to implement the plan. So that dredging is going to have to occur within the next 12 months if that's the workout plan.
Well, I think the plan would be pretty easy to develop, dredging of the reservoir, fixing of the dam, and start the mainline replacement, you know? I mean, that's kind of the top three problems. Stop the million-plus we're losing, increase the capacity, and fix the leaking dam.
Right. It's probably not the creation of the plan that's the problem, it's the pain for the plan.
Oh, yeah. That's Jack's problem, not mine. I forgot the plan.
It's not only Jessica's problem, it's we have to convince the voters to approve a bond, you know? I mean, this money just doesn't miraculously come to Port Orford. I mean, I think we got a better chance of getting grant funding probably to improve our impound because if we don't improve our impound, we can't leak. We can't drink.
With us declaring the state of emergency, it kind of sounds like, but don't quote me 100%, but I'm pretty sure that we will then be qualified for emergency funding to help with the infrastructure based upon talking to Kent Downs and this Jason person. So we might be able to have access to funds faster than what we had planned originally due to this issue.
So Pat and I spoke with David Brock Smith and Senator Wyden's staff, what, Pat, about five months ago?
Probably.
Yeah, and it wasn't real encouraging for this year, but they said they were going to put us on the radar for next year, which is right around the corner. I wonder if a follow-up conversation with them would be helpful at this time?
Wouldn't hurt. Yeah, especially because a bunch of new funding just came out. A bunch of new infrastructure funding dropped like last month. And so one of the problems with the new, with the ones we've already signed off on is when you get a building permit, you get to sign up by the fire chief, the water, you know, the utility companies. So like Shayla says, we have already signed off on those. That'll be a huge can of worms if we try not to. It sounds like we have a huge process to go through to set up, you know, the ability to have a moratorium and to get the things in place that we need to have. But we can have this two-month window. And so in a perfect world, if we get these two months, it'll start raining again, and it'll buy us a little bit of time. And it sounds like the one physical thing we could do right now, the fastest and easiest, is try to figure out how to get that thing dredged. Because then we'll just have that however many more feet of water, and hopefully it'll stay in there. But I don't know, I don't know what we can do today other than try to put 60-day restrictions as much as we can, or at least a letter out there saying they're coming in a way that sounds like it's a done deal. Like, how do we get to there today? I think we need a motion to implement, or to start the process implementing the water restrictions, something along those lines to where we can get that letter out by Monday or Tuesday.
If you can read those water restrictions into your motion, the water restrictions that you want to adopt, so it's clear what people can and can't do. You know, they can flush their toilets, but they can't water lawns.
Gotcha.
I would make a motion to declare an emergency on our water shortage problem to include no watering of lawns, no filling of pools or spas, no car washing at home, use the commercial car wash, no new water hookups, water in restaurants only if requested to provide bottled water, no power washer usage, no washing of boats, water crafts, ATVs, UTVs, unless at the designated car wash, with the exception of our commercial fishing fleet to flush at a reduced level. Indoor water conservation, take shallow baths instead of showers, saves 15 to 20 gallons per day. If you take a shower, make it five minutes or less. Don't use the toilet as a garbage can. Excessive flushing wastes water. Turn off the water while brushing your teeth. Run only full loads of laundry and dishwashers. Use a garbage disposal less and compost more. If you, if you don't want water in a restaurant, do not take it. Collectively, this will save millions of gallons per year. This emergency declaration is to be in place for 60 days, starting, what would be the start date, Shayla?
You want to do 9-1?
Monday.
Okay, starting 9-1-2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion on that portion of this?
Would you like me to include the right-of-way option that we talked about?
I'm sorry, I forgot that. I feel like we're going to a water line.
I'll take my second back, and you can just add that, Tim.
Hopefully, I don't have to reread that whole-
Can you just?
I would just recommend that we just make a second motion at that point for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion and then the first and the second still stand then?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any other additions that anybody thought of? We can do a different motion, so we'll just go ahead and vote on this one, and if there's other stuff, we'll-
Yeah, my only consideration is I worry about the power washer restriction and such things in regards to construction. We don't want to interfere in people's income with their ability to do construction.
Power washers use the most amount of water, which is ridiculous. So they use a huge, huge amount of water. That's the reason we put that in there.
Yeah, but summertime is construction time, so, you know.
Yeah, but you don't build much with a pressure washer. You don't build much with a pressure washer, yeah. Okay, well, we'll figure-
We're going to have to bite the bullet somewhere. I mean, we're not having a recovery that replaces our 300,000 gallons a day. And so our tank is getting lower every day, basically. It's not going to miraculously just pop up. I understand that what we're asking for is some hard things, but we've got, we're going to have to be hard. Otherwise, we're going to lose everything.
And we would just kill John if he had to explain to people why they couldn't wash their car, but they can pressure wash their sidewalk or their roof.
I agree.
Okay.
I think these are fair. I think what's fair about it is we're asking for compliance, and we have good people in Port Orford. So I feel like the good people in Port Orford are going to comply. And like Pat says, you're going to have a handful that, you know, are angry and want to fight everything. It doesn't matter what it is. So we're targeting the people that care about Port Orford, and they're going to be the ones that help us.
Yeah. Yeah, just gain as much as we can. That's the nature of emergency situations, I guess, is do the best you can do. So I'll go ahead and call for the question on this. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that motion passes unanimously. Tim, did you want to, or, excuse me, did someone want to add the motion for the right-aways? Or how would we want to word that, Jessica? Like, all utility work around water lines is done for 60 days, or?
John is saying boring and excavation for right-aways.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, anybody can hit something with a tractor as easily as they can with a boar, so. I would make a motion that for the next 60 days, boring or excavation in our city right-aways be suspended.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a second and a third. Any discussion on that? That's the one that's going to cut into construction, James, unfortunately. What's that?
It's unfortunate, yeah, because we've still got two months of construction season. And, you know, thinking back to those six hookups, let's hope that those six hookups don't push us over the edge like John suggested. Let's consider that those six hookups won't use any water for the next two months. You see what I'm saying? They won't be constructed in heavy water use, is what I'm saying. I think we might be covered there, I hope.
Yep.
Yeah, technically- Didn't our motion here, sorry, isn't our motion going to stop our city workers from finishing those hookups, technically?
No, actually not, is what John said.
Public works is, we're allowed to do it. We know where our shit is.
Because public work, he said he knows where their stuff is. I will implement, change the wording a little bit, but he said he knows where his stuff is.
Well, Tim did say contractors in his motion.
And we do have a vacuum truck, so we can do it without ripping stuff up, hopefully.
And the six services or whatever we have, we're not telling them that they can't do it. But new ones, like if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to, like, those are the people we can say we can't do this for two months. So any other discussion on the motion?
So I think, never mind.
What's that?
Nothing. We were just talking in here for a second, but I think we're okay.
Okay, I will, I'll call for the vote. James?
Can I ask who Wendy Frye is?
She's our meeting recorder.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
No worries.
Spelled name there.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question on the contractor excavation around our water lines and our right-of-way. So James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Kim?
Kim, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay, and now we've got those two done. How do we move forward with the, we don't need to make a motion for the resolution, correct, Shayla? We just get the resolution at our next meeting and go from there?
Right. We'll have a declaration of emergency ready for you with the resolution at the next meeting. And then you can talk about a formal moratorium at that meeting as well, if you choose to do that.
Okay, so we have covered our bases today, then, Jessica and Shayla?
I believe so.
Do we need to have the next meeting before the resolution needs to be placed, 9-1, so that they can approve the resolution and approve the state of emergency letter too, Shayla, or?
So we didn't pass a resolution today. You're going to be bringing back a declaration of emergency with a formal resolution. It doesn't matter to me when you do that. Whenever it's together, call a special meeting.
Okay, got it.
I don't think any of us have a problem with that.
As soon as it's possible, yeah.
Yeah. Shouldn't take too long.
I got a question, Pat, Tim. Tim brought up some really important parts of water conservation with the low-flush toilets and aerators and everything that goes with it. So here's a question. Our high-use facilities are going to be all our restaurants and hotels. So how can we go about asking them to upgrade their toilets and faucets and whatnot to comply with, you know, water conservation? Because I think, you know, with the hotels and restaurants, think about it, there's, you know, there's people in there all day long who are using the toilets, the sinks, the water. Hotels are no different. That's probably the majority of our water usage.
I personally have done that at my property. I did it when water here went from 258 per thousand gallons up to the current, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've lost track of it. It tops out at somewhere around $14 per thousand gallons now. So I did it at my facility, all low-flow aerators, all low-flow toilets, those kinds of things. And RVs naturally have all of that built in. I mean, when I do my calculation, how many people I have on the property, not how many people, excuse me, how many RVs I have on the property versus how much water I use per day, an RV is using between 15 and 20 gallons of water per day. So the motels and hotels, I'm trying to think of the ones that have been renovated. I think Castaway's probably been renovated. So my guess is, and even vacation homes, I was thinking about that the other day. I would like to think most of the vacation homes have been renovated with the lower-flush toilets as well. But I think the problem with vacation homes is when they're the larger ones, it's, you know, six, eight, 10 people, they can use a lot of water like that, even if they do have the low-flow devices, so.
We had a few vacation rentals whose bills were in the $600 to $1,000 range these last few months.
That's astronomical, astronomical for one house. I mean, my partner doesn't do $1,000 in a month, so it's, yeah.
Castaway is not on our water system.
Oh, they have their own well, okay.
They have a well. That's the one south of town, right?
I know, that's the one.
He corrected that. Castaway's up on Ocean View.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking of the one south of town there.
So Battle Rock and Castaway are the two in town.
Those two are on the water system, and Battle Rock had a recent- Those two are on the waters, are on the water system and Battle Rock had a recent.
So. So my, my thinking about being in contact with a well person is I can relieve the city of some water. It sounds like less water than some vacation homes. So that's my goal basically.
So the issue with vacation homes is even if it's a standard three bedroom house, it's probably being rented out by a very large group of people. And one of the ways to regulate that is to simply say that you can only have two people per bedroom in a vacation rental. I mean, there's, there's just lots of ways to regulate those vacation rentals and Port Orford might want to consider jumping on some of those regulations.
And that'd be a good way to start with the vacation rentals because that is everyone's concern. So maybe that's a good way to find some middle ground.
Plus that keeps parties and noise down too, when you have less occupants in one house. Parking, it actually solves your parking, your noise, everything. So that's, that's a great idea. Maybe that's the way we need to look at that.
You know, and you can, you can have a two-strike and you're out policy, two complaints, then your vacation rental license is pulled, but we have to have some things in place.
So Shayla, my only concern about that, and I know we're getting a little bit off topic, but if we put that in place against a vacation home, wouldn't we have to take that same kind of approach to say a bar that had two noise complaints? Wouldn't we have to? No?
No, because your vacation rentals are in residential areas, which is much different than where your bars are.
You know, you, Pat and I talked about that last week and I just keep forgetting that aspect for some reason. You're right. Okay.
Okay, guys, so I think we are looking at a plan. The next meeting will definitely concentrate on these things. Water conservation will be the big one, so we'll have the vacation rentals in there because it's a good way to segue into that conversation. We know we're going to have the resolution, which, you know, all of us already said, we'll do that as soon as we can. Sounds like hopefully next week. What else do we need to accomplish here Lauren?
Well, Jessica, how are we going to get this out to the public as quick as possible?
So I talked to Patty and we, she is sending out bills starting early Monday or Tuesday. So we are going to write a letter and include those in there. And then at that point, I'm going to work on the letter today and then I'm also going to work on the resolution and the declaration for the state of emergency. So hopefully by Tuesday or Wednesday, we'll, we'll have another meeting. But the letters will be going out ASAP. I'm going to, I'm hoping by Monday at the, at the latest.
Can, can we put those up around town somehow, like in storefronts or something? So everybody knows this is, this is really an issue for everybody.
Kind of what we're agenda is, and then also I'll put them on the website. We'll do something kind of right on top of the website. That's the first thing that you see when you come on the website also.
We should definitely, go ahead, sorry.
I'll go ahead and do a Facebook thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll send, I'll send you, I'll add, I'll add, like, I'll send you verbiage Gary so that we have all the same, everything.
That works.
Everything is the same.
Please include, include me as well Jessica, because I would like to put several copies up at my facility.
Sure, not a problem.
Might as well shoot one to the port too.
Got it.
Definitely got to get one on that popcorn chicken case at Circle K. Everybody will see it then.
Yeah, just see, see the whole city council.
It's in your phone.
I didn't say it, but Circle K seems to be the number one rated restaurant in Port Orford.
Fried chicken. They've only opened in there once.
I just wish they had a chicken line and a normal line that I have.
Sure, that's not single.
Okay, everyone, sounds like we have direction. Do we, I, like I said, I didn't print out my agenda. Is there anything else on here that I'm missing Jessica?
That was it. That was, this is the main thing that we need to get done. It was all. And then I'll also start to work for the next major meeting that we have in September, the municipal code or whatever we need to do to put in place for water conservation so that we do start to work on that also, because we need to probably get that written to the book somehow, some way.
Gotcha. And if we talk to the state about dredging, I think I can talk my commission into letting us use the, our dredge to where we can stay, you know, high enough up to where we're not hurting the bentonite. It'll be a project. I'm not saying that because I can't get my crane down there, but a large excavator could hang it, you know, far enough out to where we could easily clean up around the intake at least.
Well, since the call I've gotten, I got an email from Jason at the R C H C. He will be here on the 31st on Tuesday to start to work with John and I.
Cool.
Could we, could we possibly help entice the board by giving them our old dredge? Would that be useful for the port at all? The one that's sitting at the city yard as a boat anchor?
I'd have to think on that, but yeah, that might sweeten the deal, that's for sure. But you know, we're real interested in having access to the water because of the boat cleaning and all that good stuff, so.
Right, right.
Community service by the port.
Yeah, well, one of my jobs as port manager is try to strengthen the relationship between the port and the city, so I'm doing my job. Alrighty, well, I think, speaking of that, I should probably get back to work. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:54. Thank you all for taking the time out of the day to do this. It's super important. And have a good weekend, but don't do slip and slides and stuff, Gary. Have a great weekend, guys. You too.
See you later. Thank you, guys.
Bye bye.
Bye. Thank you all.